Going to call to order the Town Hall Sabre Zone Commission Meeting on Monday, August 17th, 2025 at 7:00 PM in Town Hall First Floor Conference Room at 302 Main Street, Old Sabre. A roll called this evening is myself, Mark Caldarella Chair, Jerry Lewis Vice Chair, John Henry Secretary and regular Commission members Laura Gray and Bob Friedman and our two alternates Mike Kelly and Brenda Dyson, also Jeremy Galli, our recording clerk. In the audience, we have no one and online other than the applicant, we have no one else. Moving forward, the minutes from our last meeting of Monday, July 21st, 2025. Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Motion made by Jerry Lewis. Is there a second? A second by Laura Gray? Any discussion, corrections? Not hearing any. We'll move to a vote. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, passes 500.
Very nice, Jeremy.
Yes, excellent job, Jeremy. Thank you. We have no other correspondence other than what's in front of us this evening. So we'll move on to our public hearing. The Murphy Group Application for Special Exception Use to Convert 464 Square Feet of Second Floor Office Space into a One Bedroom Apartment. 125, also known as 121 Main Street, map 37, lot 16 and 20, Central Business, Central Business B1 District. Advocate owner is the Murphy Group 121 LLC. Agent is Joe Wren, professional engineer. Action, open public hearing, continue or close by September 15th, 2025, or no later than September 21st, 2025. Mr. Wren?
Thank you all. Hope everyone is well. You can hear me, correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. I had to do this one from Zoom, from remote tonight. So hopefully connection remains solid. So up on the screen is the site plan that we submitted. We'll look at the floor plan momentarily. We all know this, 121 Main Street. We all know this is the Yellow Essence Building in town with the Essence Spa on the lower floor. And there are two floors above that, which is mainly currently office space. Various tenants, all office space. What many of you may not know is that behind the building, there is another lot that goes with this building. It's all the same property, but there are a lot of parking accessed off of Pine Street behind the building. So there's a paved kind of loop driveway and then several gravel parking spaces back there. It's been there for quite some time back there, but you know, without going behind, you don't really know that it's there. So there are several parking spaces in front of the property on Main Street over here and then several behind the building. I think the number is 38 total parking. So what the applicant is proposing and doing in the B1 Zone is to renovate 464 square feet of the second floor. There's currently already a bathroom in a kitchen up there for the for the office space that's on the second floor. Basically, what the renovation would be doing is privatizing an area for a living space with, you know, a bedroom and a living area, kind of like a studio apartment type setup, connecting the bathroom and the kitchen privately. So it can be lived in or rented as a one-bedroom apartment. When we looked at the parking, of course, you know, overall, the 464 square feet one-bedroom units requires parking spaces. But as we all know, 464 square feet of office space requires three parking spaces. So technically, with the numbers, we're one better conforming on parking than we are now with all office space. This complies with your B1 regulations to promote living arrangements or residential above business and retail along Main Street within the B1 Zone. So with that, we provided a statement of use, which explains everything in there. I'll convert over to that as long as everybody can now see that on the screen. So here we mentioned the 464 square feet and one-bedroom apartment per 31.2.3. Everything here, we basically already talked about. This gets, the third paragraph gets a little bit more into the details of the parking. The Health District did approve this some time ago. The property includes 38 parking spaces, seven in the front and 31 in the back. The partial conversion from office to residential reduces the overall parking by one space, as previously mentioned, making the property technically more conforming with the regulations. The proposal supports efficient use of the building, more conforming with local regulations. It contributes positively to the surrounding neighborhood and of course, allowing people to reside on Main Street in the B1 Zone. So with that, it seems rather straightforward. If there are any questions, I can try to answer those for you.
Commissioners, any questions?
Yeah, John, just a quick one. The parking for the apartment, is there a designated spots or can we just park in the back?
There is not. They could park on the street in the front. They could park in the back. There's not a designated space. If that's something important, I'm sure that they would be willing to put up, you know, a sign for that, for that one unit. But there's with 38 parking spaces, it'd be hard pressed to find any other building on Main Street that has that much parking for use. So I would imagine that they would never have trouble finding a space, you know, to park.
Okay, that answer your question?
Yeah, I just wanted, I was thinking about if I was renting that, I wanted to make sure anytime during the day that I have spots, two spots. I don't know if that's going to create an issue or not, but if possible, that they had a designated spot that's theirs.
So you would like to see two designated parking spaces in the rear?
Rear where it would be helpful, but if I'm renting there and I am parking, you know, during the course of the day, I come there or he or she doesn't have a spot. I don't know if that creates an issue for anybody else.
I get my hair done there and there is a lot of parking.
Okay, and that's, that's.
It can be a condition if the applicant is a Freeman to that, but Bob?
The applicant pointed out that the square footage allocated for the residential requires less parking than same square footage for the business use.
Right.
And in that sense, there is a an inclination to say that there's a reduction in the parking non-conformity, right? That I have, I can, I can understand that point. I do have, I have two, two issues. One has to do with the shaded spaces on, on the Main Street, shown on the site plan on the right side of the paper, on the eastern edge of, of side of the property. The shading there covers what appears to be nine parking spaces, but the southernmost at the, at the bottom of the page is not in front of this property. So that one doesn't count. And the next one up from the bottom, as you see, there is a line there that says OHW, meaning overhead wire, that connects to a utility pole in the middle of that part, of that shaded area there. That's not a parking space. So the remainder of the shaded spaces to the north, count one, two, three, four, five, six, and part of the next one. So yeah, there are seven. But for the record, the two shaded, the shading at the bottom of this site plan has to eliminate two things which otherwise might be confused as parking spaces because one's, one's not allowed to be associated with this property and the other one doesn't work because it's got a pole in the middle. So for the record, we'll designate the seven parking spaces claimed as the northernmost seven shaded spaces on Main Street. The northern sort of shared with next door, but that's okay.
The gray shading represents the, the asphalt like it does in the back. We do have a number here. We do designate seven, which is here, which is consistent with the statement of use. I agree with Bob that the most northern one on this and the most southern one do not count. We do label seven and seven are the interior ones that are fully in front of this property.
Right, your addition, counting seven still works, but for the record, those bottom two should not be shaded nor part of this parking depiction here at all. One more thing on parking has to do with aside from the non-conformities in, in the parking lot on the western side of this development, under 62.4.4, off-street parking requirements, Part C, has mixed use. Spaces for residential use will be specifically designated. So pick, pick two space. Well, the regulation says that for each dwelling unit, there would be two spaces required. I'm going to say that you need to designate at least one reserved solely for the use of the apartment.
Okay, I think that's a good compromise. We'll, we'll designate one space for that one unit.
And that would be where, Joe?
You, you can pick.
In the rear?
I, I know a lot of folks, you know, that access the business, the employees, you know, like to use these spaces, of course. If it could be a few back over in this area, I would probably choose one of those so it doesn't affect the business or be at risk of being filled by someone who wants to be closer to the door to access the business.
That would be reasonable.
Okay.
Okay.
So one of the most, one of the northwestern spots.
Okay, and that would be signed?
We would put a sign up in one spot, yes, for designated for the resident of 240, so, or 121 Main Street.
I just have to ask the obvious question. Sign wise, is the, is the property in compliance by adding another sign? Does that?
That would be a, that would be a directional sign. It would be under the.
Sign on the stick that says reserve.
Yeah.
Okay.
That would do it.
Okay, Joe?
Yep.
And then you'll also modify the plan as outlined by Mr. Freeman to eliminate those two shaded areas?
Yes.
Anything else, Bob?
Everything else will work out in terms of being non-conformity previously existing and you're going to need, there's no opportunity to fix that with regard to the space involved here. So.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions?
So for the tenant, the apartment is on the front part of the building. So they would walk on the sidewalk to get to
To the front?
The, the front doors. Okay. So then you were thinking the parking should be here for the tenant? So they can walk around?
In the back.
How they do it is up to how the building is laid out and, and who's going to live there, but.
Okay, that makes sense to me. So the parking spot would be good over here because it's nice to the walk around.
But the only, they have to designate at least one.
Yeah, we can't designate one of the ones on Main Street because those could be used by anyone.
Main Street is wild.
Okay.
It's nothing close to the concrete wall.
Any, any other, any other question?
Under 51.6, the site plan content requirement for this application, I think the commission can safely waive the requirements for site elevation drawings because there are no changes made to the exterior of the building, right? There's no windows or doors moving or anything, so.
Nope, that's correct.
Anything else, John?
No, I just saw the in the building inspected.
Yeah, which other? In terms of, we have, the only correspondence we have is from the Building Department that was issued on the 14th of August. And he indicates he's reviewed the plans for the Murphy Group. The one-bedroom apartment previously was permitted and inspected as a community kitchen area for the businesses in the building. It meets all the requirements for use as an apartment in the 2021 International Building Code. The building has a monitored fire alarm system and is equipped with a sprinkler system. I have no issues with this project moving forward. Please contact the Building Department if you have any question. Tom McElwitt. For the record.
Yeah.
If there's no other questions from the commission or does the applicant have any further comments?
No, I think we covered all the bases. Thank you.
All right.
Is it a one-bedroom or a studio apartment?
Is it studio or a one-bedroom?
It's technically, hey, let me go back to that. So this area here is all open, so it's technically a studio, but it has to be a bedroom. It's one bedroom. It's not two or more. It's one bedroom.
Okay, so we'll reference it as a studio apartment?
Sure.
Okay.
Nice to question.
Sure.
So I understand. So it says that the existing, for the existing parking spaces, including the accessible spaces that the stripings and the patching and the symbols are shown for the purposes of our plan only. How do the spaces get designated? I mean, I understand that it's gravel, but there's no designation of the spaces.
And with diagonal parking, the dimensions of the parking space are nine by 16?
Yeah.
And the aisle width is supposed to be 16 feet. But this is previously existing, non-conforming. And the only impact on the parking by calculations is a reduction in the parking requirement. So it's less non-conforming in a mathematical sense. The only other parking issue was designate the reserved space for the residential.
Right, but if you're not striping any of them, how do we designate?
It should be striped.
But it says it's not going to be. And I get it because it's gravel, so it's hard. But I mean, then they should put tires, they should put.
Technically, you are correct because it's under.
Especially the accessible spaces. Don't we, don't they have to? I mean, I know it's, it's an existing situation, so maybe they don't, but.
That's 62.4.2.8.3, Part C. The spaces are to be marked by lines, curbs or other to indicate individual spaces.
Yeah, that's right.
So if there were wheel stops would do that.
Okay.
But that's for, that's, that's mostly for new parking lots though. Remember, we're getting one more conforming to add all of those curb stops to a pre-existing condition that's more conforming is, seems like it's a little bit of a burden. It's never been striped or had wheel stops in the past. We're not adding any parking. We're just showing that, how it works. We're not changing the parking. We're not adding parking. We're not changing the parking lot at all.
I mean, my position is that this is a special exception and from a safety standpoint, you should designate your parking spaces or at least designate your accessible space. Like the accessible spaces should be improved appropriately, but that's not completely, that's just.
I have to ask Bob this question. Bob?
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 Yes.
Since this is, this applicant, this application has to do with the apartment in a pre-existing, non-conforming situation. Does this commission have the ability to define the markings of the back parking lot?
Under Section 10 Non-Conformity, where there is an opportunity to reduce or eliminate a non-conformity, it's supposed to be handled in such a way as to do that. In the sense that there is no change to the configuration of the parking lot other than saying this space is reserved, then that non-conformity can stay in this case because they have reduced the non-conformity mathematically. And that doesn't fully satisfy Section 10, but at least it's a step in the right direction. And in this case, there is no simple means to reduce or eliminate the non-conformity without without we do, without impacting the whole site, right, development, right? Where can be done, it should be done. In this case, it really can't be done. The non-conformity previously existing can't be addressed with the, with the property the way it is, even if there's no variance.
You mean the non-conformity that it's not striped, that it's, that they're not designated?
This, it's, is it gravel? The problem there is, what do you do? Put little bits of stripes on the pavement?
No, they.
You could do that on the north.
I mean, those stops is.
On the north facing spaces, but.
Because we also can't legally call these handicap spaces if, I mean.
Well, actually, that was. They have an option to have two handicap spaces because they have, the minimum is one, right? And if the applicant decides to have two.
But they can.
They're supporting multiple businesses and the possibility, not going to be for the residential because that's upstairs, right? There's no elevator. So the handicap is not for that square footage. The handicap space would be for the business on the ground floor.
Correct.
Right.
And it.
But how is that a legitimate accessible space?
Because it was previously, it was previously approved as in a non-conforming situation.
Wait, was it previously approved or it's just been there?
Yeah.
So.
That I don't have in front of me, so I can't.
Let me, let me make an analogy. The Building Department reviewed and they said, this meets everything. No changes are required. Yes, but they have to do with handicap accessible spaces. So if it didn't meet the building code, he would have required to build those handicap spaces. But we're not, we're not doing that. We're not changing the parking. We're not making it less conforming.
Right.
Right.
Section 10.7.5, non-conformity improvements. Technically, there's no improvement being made to the parking lot.
Right, I understand that, but then don't show me a plan that tells me how many parking spaces you have because you don't have any parking space. I mean, you don't really, it's just a free for all.
No, that's not true.
It is, because that's what's going to happen out there.
It's not happening now.
That, that's what I'm saying, right now.
It's not happening now.
Right now, it's a free for all.
But it's not happening now.
Excuse me?
You're saying it's a free. Are you indicating?
The business is running there.
Right.
Been there for a long time.
Right, without any designation.
Without any issue.
Right, I understand.
Without a free for all, it's just.
Well, by a free for all.
So there's your problem?
I could never, by a free for all, what I mean is that right now there are no designated spaces, right? I understand that. So there aren't any on Main Street either. So to make this argument that we have these spaces, I mean, from it, it, it's, it's, it just doesn't make any sense to me.
It just, it just shows that we have the space for that many spaces.
Nope, I mean, it doesn't, I, I'm not voting against.
Oh, it does matter. That's why you're part of the commission.
Yeah.
All right.
Got a good perspective.
So since the residential.
Plus, it's a special exception, right? So we can require certain things that we think are appropriate from a safety perspective or an appropriate use to me. I still think designation of spaces is a pretty basic undertaking, but that's just fine. It's okay. I, I, I get it. I, I hear the argument.
I know where you're coming from, but I think in this case, because the math is a reduction in the parking requirement, it's still non-conforming, but it, it's less non-conforming than before. And they can't go back. Once they put the residential in, can't go back to the business use because that would require more parking and, and they can't make the non-conformity worse. So this is the going in the right direction kind of a thing. And since there's no change in the design, then there's, to me, there's not much opportunity to say that you have to make it more conforming when, while you're changing the design.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Since it is a public hearing, it will identify that there is no one in the audience to speak in for or against, nor is there anyone online at the present time. So at this point, are we prepared to close public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion to close public hearing?
I'll make the motion, close the public hearing.
The motion has been made to close the public hearing for the Murphy Group Application for Special Exception Use to Convert 464 Square Foot a second floor office space into a one, into a studio apartment. We'll direct that at 125, AKA 121 Main Street, map 37, lot 16 and 20, Central Business B1 District. Is there a second?
I seconded.
I seconded by John Henry. Is there any discussion? Not hearing any. We'll vote to, to close. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstained, passes 500. Do we have enough in front of us tonight to make a decision on this? I believe we do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We could, we can deliberate on this.
Yeah.
There's, there's no outstanding referrals or reports that.
Okay. We're not reading it, so we can. So.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for a special exception use to convert 464 square feet of second floor office space into a one-bedroom apartment at 125, also known as 121 Main Street, map 37, lot 16 and 20 in the B1 District. With the condition that at least one parking space be reserved for the apartment occupants and there, there be a sign that says it's reserved and that the spaces along Main Street count as seven, but only the, the seven northernmost shown on the plan. The space with the utility, the, the spot with the utility pole in it does not count. Nor does the one on the site plan. Since most, the most southern one on the site plan, that does not get allocated to this address.
That can, southernmost, southernmost?
Southernmost, yes.
Seconded by Jerry Lewis. Is there any further discussion? Not seeing any, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye, opposed, abstained, passes 500.
Thank you all. Thank you. Have a good night.
You too.
Thank you.
There are no, I have no committee representative or staff reports from our CEO at just, at this point. our CEO at this, at this point. Um we haven't met in England Wetlands in quite some time. We have a meeting coming up this Thursday. Um we're a pretty full docket from what I'm seeing, and there are three violations that have to be looked at, so uh pretty considerable amount uh from one meeting, as you know, Laura. Um but uh we haven't had a meeting since June, but there's been nothing on the, on the docket. Bob, anything on your committee?
No, um just look for that survey on the planning commissions and affordable housing, I'm sorry, the housing task force subsection. Take the survey, if you will, to have an influence.
Yep.
At this, at this point, uh I don't know that there's much more for the housing task force to do except to pull together what it's got and what has learned into a, a report. And I don't know the format for that, but I would like it to, to show um what kinds of housing Old Saybrook Planning Commission and survey results and eventually the zoning commission would like to see more of this type that we already have or some of another type which we don't have and then be quiet as to all the other types that are out there indicating that we prefer all these that we've specified way before those. And the Connecticut Council of Municipalities uh has recently clarified their objections to the fair share concept of the House bill, which was vetoed by the governor. And I think they've pretty much nailed it and the CCM is doing a good job of moving things forward with regard to housing without having to uh succumb to quotas issued by a fair share formula, which doesn't necessarily work for each town. It's certainly not even for every town. So that's, that's where things stand as I see it.
Okay, thank you. Um at this point, there's nothing else. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Okay.
By Jerry Lewis, seconded by Bob Friedman. Any discussion? All in favor, sing the word saying aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero zero. Thank you, everyone.